I'd like to call the Monday, March 13 meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording. We have a representative of the Worcester Telegram making an audio recording. Seeing no one else, could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item we have is public comment, and we have Elizabeth, and I'm going to let you say your last name, Elizabeth, who's going to talk about the volleyball tournament. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Elizabeth Anna Soskis, and I'm with the leadership team at the Auburn High School. This Saturday, we're hosting a volleyball tournament at the high school from 5 until around 9:00. So the price is $4 for kids to participate, $10 for adults to participate, and for adults it's 19 and older. And we are charging for spectator admission, and it's $3 for everyone except senior citizens and kids who are under 6. So we're encouraging more teams to sign up, seeing as it's this Saturday. And the link for the registration can be found on the Auburn site's Facebook, and if you can't find it there, you can always email Auburn Athletics. You can also pay for the tournament online or at the door. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Good luck with the tournament.
Sorry, and could I speak?
Absolutely. Mr. Berthel.
I'd just like to say that the leadership group was a group of, been a liaison for two years. It was started by the new athletic director at the Auburn High School, Mr. Davis, and it was put together. It consists of mostly captains and captain, future captains of the athletic teams. The kids are really the most amazing kids. They're the ones that were, you know, play three sports. They're overachievers in school, they're involved in their community. And, you know, last year, they did what was called a Run for a Rocket, and my own daughter was benefited from that. They donated some money to her to help in her recuperation from her accident. This year, they're raising money for the Phalen family. Mr. Phalen was a teacher at the high school. His wife is also a teacher, from what I understand, still in Auburn, but she's had to be out. Mr. Phalen got sick, and so some of the proceeds will be going to help Mr. Phalen. So these kids have worked really hard doing that, as well as trying to get everything else done during their senior year. There are a few juniors involved, but it's really an amazing group, and I'd love to see people come out and support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berthel. The next item we have is presentations and public hearings, and we have Senator Mike Moore here, who's going to give us a budget update. Please come up and join us. So how's it look?
Well, it looks like we're getting 12 to 18 inches, right? Hopefully it's under 12.
You are correct.
But I'm sure your snow budget hasn't been depleted yet.
Not at all, no.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I just wanted to give you a budget update. As normal, everyone, well, I should say, for the public, the Senate budget is not released until, or debated until the last week of May, so I am here discussing the governor's budget, which was released. And the House, and actually, wait, I'm on the Senate Joint Committee on Ways and Means, and we are, in conjunction with the House, starting our hearings, which we shall go across the state conducting. And we will actually be holding one on March 20 at Worcester State University, and it will be dealing with public safety. So any issue from the courts to criminal justice to public safety will be addressed at that hearing.
Could you just mention the date and time again?
It's March 20 at 10:00 a.m. at Worcester State University.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And the House will release their budget, I think, the third week of April, and then debate, debate it the last, the last week of April. And then it gets sent to us. We release ours the third week of May, and we will debate it the last week of May. So I am just here tonight just to go over what the governor has filed.
Great, thanks.
The governor has released his version of the fiscal 2018 budget for January 2017. The House Ways and Means Committee budget recommendation is expected, okay, mid-April. In the UGGA, which is the Unrestricted Government, General Government Aid, the town of Auburn is recommended for fiscal year 2018 for $1,710,866. The fiscal 2017 final budget for the town of Auburn was $1,646,647, so that was, it's a net increase of $64,219. The governor's House One budget proposes $45.2 billion in total spending, an increase of $1.57 billion, or 3.59% over fiscal year 2017. The budget would increase unrestricted government aid by $39.9 million over the current fiscal year 2017 levels to about $1.1 billion, which is an increase of about 3.9%. It's worth noting that the tax collections for February badly missed the budget benchmarks. The Department of Revenue recently reported that February's collections totals are 9.1% below benchmarks, while tax collections through January grew by 2.7% over fiscal year 2016. Revenue collections are still below benchmarks by about 1%. And so in the next several months, it's going to be critical for us to be watching the budget. Hopefully, we will not have to do 9C cuts. We already did 9C cuts at the beginning of the year, well, excuse me, I should say, the governor did 9C cuts beginning of the year for about $53 million, and there were some local AMOCs that were, that were cut. We were hoping to try to readdress those. The governor has filed a supplemental budget, so we were looking at trying to restore some of the 9C cuts while we were doing the 9C, excuse me, the supplemental budget. But now with the additional shortfalls, I don't think we'll be able to restore some of those cuts. The governor has also filed a supplemental budget of its House 72 to cover unavoidable shortfalls in funding, including $20 million for the unbudgeted state snow and ice account. The bill is currently in the House Ways and Means Committee. According to the governor's proposed fiscal 2018 budget, unrestricted general government aid to the town of Auburn would increase by $64,219 over fiscal year 2017, a total of The legislature is currently reviewing a bill, House 73, that would deliver $200 million for local road repairs. This is what you commonly refer to as the Chapter 90 funding. It is expected the bill will be, will move forward during the month of March to help the local communities during the construction season. So hopefully by the end of this month, because you'll, we have to, as you know, you're going to have to stop bidding some of these projects, so we want to try to get the money out as soon as possible so that you'll have, and you know what you can spend. Auburn Chapter 90 funding fiscal year 2018 is not, has not been determined yet. The fiscal year 2017 level was $608,943. Statewide, the governor's fiscal 2018 budget, one budget for House One's proposal increases Chapter 70 aid, for those in the audience, Chapter 70 is our school aid, Chapter 70 aid by $91.4 million to $4.7 billion, which reflects an increase of about 1.97% over fiscal year 2017, and a $207.4 million more than 2000, excuse me, more than fiscal year 2016. The governor's budget is based off a $20 minimum per pupil increase. I think that you saw previously under Governor Patrick, we averaged $25 as a minimum per pupil funding level. The governor, each of his budget, has proposed $20. The first year of his budget, we increased it back to $25, and last year, we actually went, the legislature actually went to $55 as a minimum per pupil funding level. So hopefully, as the budget moves through, again, we'll be able to, hopefully, try to restore.
Can I ask a question?
Excuse me. Yes, Mrs. Brothel.
I'm sorry, Senator, could you just repeat, what was the last amount for Chapter 90 that we received? I know this year, in 2018, it's going to be determined.
Right. Last year was $608,943.
Thank you very much, Senator.
You're welcome. So again, so the budget right now, the governor's budget is proposing a $20 minimum, $20 minimum per pupil increase over last year. So hopefully, we can get that back up to $55. I don't, realistically, I don't see it having a chance of being adopted, but the last three years or four years, I have been asking, in conjunction with the MTA, for $100 minimum per pupil funding level. So the $55 was a big step towards that last year. So again, hopefully, we can get, at least get close to $55. Notably, in response to the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, the benefits and fixed charges rate was increased in the fiscal 2018 budget by $66 million. So it's an additional $66 million. For the 30 consecutive fiscal year, the homeless student transportation, otherwise known as the Kenny Vento reimbursements account, was level funded at $8.35 million, $8.35 in funding. Chatter school reimbursement funding has also remained level funded between fiscal year 2001 and fiscal year 2018 at $80.5 million. And within House One's circuit breaker funding has also remained level funded at $277,281,180. And the legislature did, I think you're aware that prior to last year, the legislature was funding the kindergarten grants at $18 million, and then last year, the governor came up with $18 million, but by the time it got done through the legislative process, it was down to $200,000. So I don't know if we'll be able to do anything with that again, but I'd like to see if we could try to get that back up again. So the town of Auburn's Chapter 70 funding fiscal year 2018 appropriation is $10,025,963. The fiscal year 2017 final budget was $8,983,238. So we see a difference of $1,042,725 in the positive. The governor's fiscal year 2018 budget places the Auburn Public School enrollment at approximately 200, excuse me, 2,431 students, which is an increase of 44 students, about 1.84% over fiscal year 2017. The governor's budget also sets the foundation budget for Auburn at $23,973,077, which is an increase of $850,953, which is a 3.6% increase over fiscal year 2017, and a $1,329,251 increase over fiscal year 2017. The district's net minimum contribution within House One is set at $13,947,114, which is a decrease of $194,654, or a decrease of 1.38% over fiscal year 2017. as you know, the Foundation Budget Review Commission issued the findings of their commission last session, and they recommended in that, that additional $1 billion be appropriated to cities and towns to cover the increased costs of Chapter 70. We haven't been able to actually adopt that. Senator Sonia Chang Diaz did last year file, and she has filed again this year, the Senate 223, An Act Modernizing the Foundation Budget for the 21st Century. This legislation would, over several, seven years, increase our Chapter 70 funding to the levels required in the Foundation Budget Review Commission. So it would increase it by about $200 million a year to that level to our cities and towns. So I have signed on as a co-sponsor of that, and so hopefully, we can get that, at least some action on that. The Senate did pass last year, prior to the charter school vote, the Senate passed what we were hoping was a compromise piece of legislation to avoid the charter school vote, the expansion of charter schools going to the referendum, what was called, what we referred to as the RISE Act. And in that, the Senate did support expanding our charter schools, but we also did, in that legislation, fully fund our Chapter 70 at the levels that were, that were recommended by the Foundation Budget Review Commission report. And we also fully funded our circuit breaker and the charter school reimbursement. That, that legislation was never adopted in the House, so I don't know if that's going to be coming back again with a charter school issue. It is probably a moot issue this year for the session, but so the Senate did look to try to increase that funding to those levels. Some legislation outside of it. Any questions on the budget?
I won't say. Senator. Any questions on the budget? Did you want to comment on the budget at all?
I won't say for now, thank you. I was, I had the pleasure of having a meeting recently to go over some of the numbers, so we appreciate you coming in.
No, my pleasure, thank you. And actually, the town of Auburn should be thankful that your town manager is on the MMA Legislative Committee, so it does give us an opportunity to meet with her more than we do most of the town managers, for input from the town and also from the Mass Municipal Association. I did file some legislation, I don't know if, this year, last year went through the Senate, again, it did not get passed by the House. Some legislation to establish a special committee to look at the Dover Act. And the Dover Act is, allows our religious institutions and schools and nonprofits to be exempt from local zoning and property taxes. We've, in some of my communities, the city of Worcester, Millbury, I don't know if it's, has come up yet in the town of Auburn, there's been a lot of questions about the application of the, or the implementation of the Dover Act, and whether it applies to certain nonprofits that have come to the towns. Again, the Senate did adopt this in the zoning reform bill that was passed last year, but the bill that, that, it's an ominous bill, never, again, did not, did not move through the House, so that has been refiled again. And actually, this is an initiative that was brought forth by your town manager, the Senate, it was Senate 1572, An Act Relative to Municipalities' Right of First Refusal for Agricultural Land. In this, we were, we were trying to give the municipalities an additional 60 days to have their town meeting to research whether they would utilize their first right to refusal on agricultural properties. So right now, they are, they are, receive special tax status, exemptions for certain taxes at a lower rate. If they're going to be purchased, they get to, at that point, the town gets to have first right of refusal on purchasing it. But right now, the current law only allows a town to act within 120 days. The legislation that was recommended by your town manager would give the town another 60 days, 180 days, so that the town could thoroughly research it and hopefully go back to the voters' in-town meeting with a, with a more due diligence informed on this.
So that's the property common we know, known as 61A, the land that we deal with, the 61A land.
And some other legislation which could be, I guess, of interest to you would be, I've been working with the Board of High Education and the Secretary of the Department of Education regarding early, early college high schools, and it's to try to bring more AP dual enrollment programs at a reduced cost to our students into the high schools so that they could possibly graduate with at least 12 or more credits, college credits. So it addresses, one, accessibility to programs, addresses to, hopefully, the costs, because this pilot program would actually be funded by the Commonwealth, and it would allow some students, if they had the abilities, to, you know, to graduate with college credits and help them move through the process. A lot of the, a lot of the goals for this, these programs are to bring some college programs, classes into the high school, so that students who might not think that they even could be going to college, might have the opportunity to take some of these classes and realize that they do have the opportunity or the skills that they necessary or capable of to go to college. I was going to say, it's a charter school issue. So I don't think you have charter school issues, do you? No? Okay. So that's really it, unless you have any other questions.
Well, Senator, you mentioned that, you know, you're serving on the Ways and Means Committee. I know you just started a new legislative session. Can you tell us a little bit about your recent committee assignments and what committees you'll be serving on?
Well, I have been, prior to this term, I've been the chairman for the Joint Committee on High Education, and I was, and vice chairman of the Committee on Public Safety, on Ways and Means, of the three primary committees. I have been reappointed to all three lows, and this year, I was also given a second chairmanship, which is the Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. So now I will be chairing with Representative Jim O'Day from Worcester, so we'll actually have two central masses. She sits, legislators are chairing this committee, and the committee's responsibilities really deal with any legislation from home rules to legislation dealing with the operations of municipalities.
Great.
So, so the bill that we referenced, this virus 61A, will hopefully be coming to that committee.
Yeah. So I know we've, we've already discussed your committee assignments, especially the municipalities, so I think the town manager would like to say something on that.
Yeah, first of all, I just want to publicly acknowledge all the work that you've done and your entire office staff, they're tremendous every time you call, just so supportive. So on behalf of everyone in Auburn, you really advocate so hard for us on a lot of different levels, legislative, every time we have a grant that we've applied for at the state level and we contact your office, you give us full letters of support. You've come out speaking on behalf of cities and towns and bringing control back to localities, which I know a lot of the legislation that you file is to give control back to the localities that know their communities better than anybody knows their communities. So we appreciate it. Again, you did mention, so thank you, but it works out well because I am on the MMA Municipal and Regional Public Policy Committee, which looks at legislation that affects municipalities across the Commonwealth, so we'll have an opportunity to work with the senator and his joint committee, hopefully to get some of these legislative initiatives, zoning, some of the other ambulance and other legislative issues.
Actually, as you were speaking, I was just thinking how you've already come before with us, to us, with some recommendations on the marijuana legislation. So that's something that, which is actually going to be critical in the legislature, that we address some of the, some of the changes that need to be made to that referendum. I mean, it will not, it's not going to change the will of the voters. Recreational marijuana will be legalized, but there are, there are several glaring issues that have to be addressed in the legislation that was passed, and based on our meetings with the town manager, they went back to MMA, they actually brought forward, forward to us some legislative changes that they would like to see adopted. That's going to give the municipalities more strength.
Correct. And again, it does not usurp the will of voters. It is to make it easier for municipalities to implement the law that's now in place because some of the mechanisms for doing so just aren't there. So it would eliminate any gray areas, allow municipalities to move forward, and hopefully do the right thing by the voters.
Right.
And we just need some more definition, as you know. So I'm looking forward to it. It's a good opportunity, given the fact that he's chairing the, the senator's chairing the joint committee of the same committee that I'm very active on, so, and we are, we track legislation, we advocate for it, we advocate against it when it's not in the town's best interest, and the senator's just been tremendous. So really, we look forward to working with you, and thank you.
Likewise, thank you.
Thank you for the update. We hope those numbers hold. So have a good night.
You too. Thank you very much. And good luck with the storm tomorrow, to yourself and to all the residents of Shu-, of Shu-3 Auburn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a storm coming?
No, just a small one. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
The next item we have is a 705 hearing for a petition for Verizon New England Incorporated and Massachusetts Electric Company, known as National Grid, for two pole joint locations on Leicester Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is open. Is there a representative? If you could come up and just, you're welcome to come up right up here. It might, you can come up here, it might be easier for you to put your stuff down.
Thank you very much.
So if you can, we have the information in our packet. If you can just tell us a little bit about why, why you need to do this.
First of all, I'm Thomas Blicars, B as in Boy, L.I.C.H.A.R.Z. I work for UC Synergetic. We are engineering consultants and consultants for rights of way for Verizon. So I'm here on behalf of Verizon to petition for these two pole locations. And so what's happening is that the N grid is going to be upgrading their lines, and during their surveys of Leicester Street, they found a couple of poles, poles 93 and poles 100, they're on corners, and those poles, since they're on corners, need to be supported, otherwise they'll topple over. So the way they're being supported today is that there is a guy wire from the pole across the street into trees on the other side. So that's the way it was done back in the day, when a pole needed to be supported, especially when there was nothing but woods way back in the day. Either the power company or the telephone company simply threw a wire into a tree and get out of town. So now, when we come back years later to upgrade the wires and upgrade the poles, we take those out of the trees as a matter of course, and we place the correct structure, which is a support pole, a stub pole, and we transfer that wire from the tree to the pole. And so that's what we're hoping to do out there on Leicester Street. Those pole locations are staked, the stakes are in the ground, and behind the pole, we need to also place an anchor. And then there's a down guy from the top of that stub pole down to that anchor. So that's the whole system, a wire across the street to the stub pole, a wire down at an angle to an anchor in the ground, and that is what is going to replace the support for those two poles. That's the proper way to do it.
Okay. Are there any questions from board members? Are there any abutists in attendance? So just for the record, I'll, I'll say that there were, there were 20 abutists who were notified.
Yes.
And ask you if you received any concern or comments from any of the abutists.
No, not a thing in my file.
Mr. Jacobson, do you know if anyone called the town hall with any concerns?
We did not.
Okay, so, so all the abutists have been notified, and there have been no concerns regarding this hearing. So if there's no public comment, and if you have nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Is there a motion regarding the request?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich, I'd like to make the motion to approve the petition for the two joint poles locations on Leicester Street.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you very much for having me here, and good luck to all tomorrow with the big Northeastern, okay? Be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good night.
You also.
The next item we have is a change of manager for Halligan's Royal Lounge LLC at 889 Southridge Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Two.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Is the applicant here? If you could come up and join us, please. While you're making your way up in your packet, you'll find the application that went to the, that goes to the A, B, C, C, all the pertinent documents. Good evening. If you can just identify yourself for the record.
Steven Bertill.
Hey, Steven. So can you tell us a little bit about what's going to happen here with this application?
I will be in control of running Halligan's.
Okay.
Of all the functions and everything that goes on in the place.
Okay. And the standard questions, you have all the necessary certifications, tip certification?
Yep.
Okay. And how many people work under you?
Right now, me.
Just you? Okay.
Me, I have my wife to help me.
Okay. So you're-
Some mother help, but very, it's pretty much me.
Okay. So, so are you pretty much on site during the hours of operation?
Yep.
Okay. So this boy is pretty- So, this boy has pretty strong views on serving underage people. We just want to ensure that you-
Everyone comes in, they're showing IDs.
Okay.
We don't, I don't care. Some people, even older ones, "You want my IDs?" Yes, we do.
That's a good-
I don't care how old you are, you need to have one. Just be served alcohol.
That's a good practice. If you ask everyone, no one slips through the cracks.
Correct.
So, do members have any questions? Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is closed. Is there a motion regarding the application?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the change of manager to Steven Bertell for Halligan's Royal Lounge located here in Auburn.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, and good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The next item we have is an Eagle Scout project presentation by Eric Rockwood. Eric, if you could come up and join us, please? And I see we have our DPW director, Bill Coyle, here with you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a brief introduction. Several months ago, Eric Rockwood had come to my office for an important project that he was undertaking as part of his Eagle Scout project. And since then, he's met with us several times. He's also come in and he's met with the civil engineer Joanna Paquin as well to coordinate the project. Without getting into too much detail, because I don't want to steal Eric's thunder, I will turn it over to him, but just to let you know, he has our full support for the project. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Eric?
So, hi, my name is Eric Rockwood, and I'm with Troop 121 of Auburn. And my Eagle Scout project is to put markers like this around granite curbing, catch basins around Auburn. And what we're going to do when the snow melts is, we have maps from the DPW of types of curbing. And what I'm going to do is go around and update them all, find all the granite ones, and then gav groups of scouts with me, go around and mark them. And the process is, we're going to find them, clean them up from dirt, apply the glue, stick them, and mark which ones we've done. And by the end, we hope to have 300 of these on granite curbing and an updated map.
Thank you. So, it sounds like a great project. And I know, like, getting the stickers out there is important. But can you tell us a little bit about what, why we need to identify these? What you'll accomplish by, like, what the sticker says and what you hope to accomplish?
Well, the stickers say no dumping drains to waterways. And what many people do is jump oil and all sorts of things into them. And those go towards all, like, the lakes, rivers. And that's very, very, very bad. Just a little bit of oil could cover a lot. So, we hope to prevent the spread of pollution.
Great.
And of water.
Good job. Great project.
Yeah.
And if I could add, the timing of the project couldn't be better. This is part of the town of Auburn's compliance with the NIPD's permit, National Pollution Discharge Elimination Systems Permit. We file annually with the EPA. And it's part of that, there is a storm, it's part of the storm mark component. There's an educational portion of it. And the DPW had purchased these with hopes of our staff or our employees applying these. But as you can imagine, it's going to be quite an effort to place 300 of these on the curb stones. So, the only, so I'm very thankful that Eric and his crew is going to be doing that. The only request that I had for them was to make sure that the work was done from the sidewalk side of the road, so that they're, you know, in a safe location. If they do pursue Route 12 or Route 20 locations, they'd have to go before Mass Highway for their Mass DOT, for their approval. But it's an excellent project. It helps us in terms of resources getting this done. So, we're very thankful of Eric to undertake this project.
Great. Mr. Berthel?
A couple of comments. One is obviously a super idea to be working from the sidewalk side of things. Can we also provide the boys with orange cones so that they can set up on either side of the sewer? So, make sure cars definitely have to go out around that area when they're working on it. That's one thing I'd like to see.
We have cones, and we also have safety vests, too.
All right, great. And my second comment was, the stickers are already made up. Is there a phone number on that, which if somebody did have hazardous waste, that would direct them to, as to who to call to find or, is, was that taken into consideration?
Unfortunately, when we order the stickers, they only come sort of prefabricated. And so, they don't come with a phone number for individual towns. Obviously, so anyone has any hazardous material, they can contact the Board of Health. I think we have the Hazardous Waste Day every other year to assist with residents to dispose of that properly. It's definitely a good project from our perspective, because a lot of people have the belief that the catch basins go to the sewer system. And in Worcester, there are some systems that are a combined system. But in Auburn, they're not. So, anything that you put in that catch basin drains directly into a water body, so either river, a stream, or the pond. I've spoken to people, I'll see walking their dogs, and they'll take the bag from the dog and throw it into a catch basin, believing that it goes into a sewer system. And so, it's very important to educate the public. And I don't think people, a lot of people aren't doing it purposely. They just aren't aware that it drains to a water body. So, it's very important for us, and it's definitely going to help educate the public, I think.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Berthel?
I just want to, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Okay.
It's Paul and Berthel. I just want to tell you that it's an excellent, excellent idea. And I wish you and your peers the best of luck. Stay safe, and thank you for thinking about community.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no communications under Board of Selectment items. Next item we have is a one-day beer and wine license for the Knights of Columbus fundraiser at 68 Central Street, excuse me, on Saturday, April 1st, from 5:00 to 10:00. We have the applications in our packet. Is there a representative here for that? Mr. Butler?
Hi.
Good evening.
Stay here.
Whenever you prefer.
Yeah, whatever.
I know you, but if you could just-
As long as the camera's gone from behind my head to show my bald spot, I'm all set.
So, I know you, but the whole world may not. So, if you-
My name is Joseph Butler, and I am, in this case, trying to get a one-day beer and liquor license for the Knights of Columbus at Monsignor Harry Council at St. Joseph Church. This fundraiser, this will be our 11th year. Prior to the last 10, we've raised over $70,000 for scholarships and charities. It gets divided right in half. So, $35,000 has gone towards graduating high school seniors, and the other half go to any sort of charity that requests money. And since we're in a church, we give it all away. So, that's about it.
Okay. So, was it you who met with the DCG? Or someone?
Yeah, I can lie and say yes.
Someone on your behalf?
They, yeah, no, I did. But they waived the meeting with the DCG because of my past years. So, this year I didn't actually meet with them. I was going to, but there was, they said, go right to the big weeks.
Certainly. Okay. So, I'll just read the recommended conditions that the DCG has. And I will ask you about one of them. The applicant shall obtain all necessary permits and inspections from town departments, boards, and commissions. The applicant shall obtain all necessary approvals from state agencies. The applicant shall provide the crowd manager's certification to the building department prior to the event start date. And the applicant shall provide any updated tip certificate and liability insurance form for the Board of Selectment prior to the start date. Is the, is the crowd manager's certificate something?
Yes.
Okay. So-
I have, I am the guy.
You are the guy. Have you done it online? Have you?
Yes, I have it. I think I sent it to Shannon. I don't know if Shannon's last name, to be honest with you, but it's easy to remember because my daughter's name is Shannon.
Okay.
She should have copies of all that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all been taken.
So, you'll be the crowd manager?
I am.
Great. Do any members have any questions? So, I'll just say that it's a very, you know, I've attended in the past. I think it's a very well-run, organized event. We have the map in our packet, which, you know, is very clear where the food will be, where the kitchen will be, where alcohol is served. You know, it's, shall I say, an older crowd, so I don't think there's-
Yeah, we don't let a lot of little kids come in because of-
Yeah. Again, and just, you know, the crowds, the crowd manager's certificate and the responsibilities-
Do you have it in there?
I don't, but I'm sure we have it in our packet, so. So, if you just want to give us the date again?
It's April 1st. We're not fooling. So, if anybody would like to attend, just so you know, it's $12 a ticket, which includes your meal. The event basically runs, doors open at 5:00. Meal starts at 6:00. Races start at 7:00. And basically, we put on six fake horse races. So, we have people in the audience come out to be jockeys. You roll the dice, that's how you win. You can bet on each race. And we have an emcee who does each race in a different character. So, it's a really more of a humorous type of thing also. I don't think he's as funny as I am, but that's okay. You know, he's pretty funny. But it's not usually typical, sit down, have a meal, raise money. It's actually a great night. You're out by 10:00. And if any of you would like to go, haven't been, besides Doreen, give me a shout after, or I can send you tickets. Like I said, Ellers is doing the catering. So, if any of you have been to Ellers, I don't want to give Ellers a big plug, but they have excellent food also. And it's just a fantastic night. The crowd's great, and we have a blast. And like I said, we raised a lot of money for kids.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do any members have any questions? Is there a motion?
It doesn't yet. I'd like to make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG that were just read, to be placed on the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And the next item is, as we do for most nonprofits, there's a vote to waive the fee for the one-day beer and wine license for the Knights of Columbus fundraiser at 68 Central Street.
I'd like to-
I'm okay.
Do we need, so moved? Or just do so moved?
Okay. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Good luck with your event.
Thank you very much. You guys have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
That's okay. That's okay.
The next item we have is our draft zoning bylaw amendments. I see we have our town planner here. If you don't mind coming up and joining us. It's pretty cut and dry. This is to, well, you can tell us the process. We're going to transmit.
Sure. Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair. Matthew Benoit, Tom Planner. We've proposed this evening, at least, the zoning bylaw review committee has brought forth four amendments to the zoning bylaws. Section 2.2 and Sections 4.1, 1.2, 1.1 are based on recommendations from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. And they're both related to updates for the flood insurance rate maps. The other section is Section 3.9.4.6. This adds the language for electric vehicle charging stations. It's more specific into the bylaw under accessory uses. And the fourth amendment is just a renumbering, but because it gave a vacant paragraph a new number, it gets considered amendment. So, it's Section 3.9.5, temporary commercial activities. It's already in the bylaw, it's just received its own section.
Great. So, these amendments are then transmitted to the planning board, which they in turn hold a public hearing where residents could comment on these at that time.
Correct.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions, comments? Is there a motion on item C?
I'd like to make, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion now. We transmit the draft amendments to the planning board for the required public hearings in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. The next item we have is a draft zoning bylaw for the annual town meeting, the vote on transmitting, the draft proposal to create Section 3.3, temporary moratorium on the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana to the planning board for the required public hearing. Mr. Benoit, if you could just give us a little update. And I ask you for this in case people are watching and they can listen for that public hearing information in case they want to comment at that time.
Understood.
Thank you.
Sure. So, this is a draft temporary moratorium. This would prohibit the recreational sale of marijuana in Auburn for a period of 18 months. This gives the town an opportunity to create a bylaw to regulate, excuse me, the recreational aspect of marijuana that was voted at the ballot in November. So, this would be a temporary ban through December 31st of 2018, while the state continues to work on legislation and create rules to help us govern the use of these. So, this is just for that moratorium. It gives us an opportunity to work on that.
Great. And does this have to go to the Attorney General's office?
Yes.
Just, do you folks know how many other towns? I mean, obviously, I think this is the right thing to do here in Auburn. Do we have surrounding towns that are also doing the same thing?
Through the chair, yes, yes, we do. I just, I've been to two seminars in the last week with multiple towns that are proposing this. This is a boilerplate moratorium that came from an approved town in West Bridgewater, Mass. And many towns, at least a dozen that I've spoken to individually, are adopting the same moratorium, but applying it to their towns. Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, I should answer. Also, many communities are looking at a total ban on the ballot question, which is what's required by the, the ballot question requires a, excuse me, ballot question for, that passed for recreational marijuana, requires a ballot question to ban marijuana. And I know Westboro, the other evening, voted to approve that. And some other communities have it on their upcoming ballot.
Is there a motion?
Is the motion? I don't know.
I'd like to make a motion that we transmit the draft proposal to the planning board for the required public hearings, hearings in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you, Mr. Benoit.
Thank you.
Do you have anything, you don't have anything else on the agenda, do you?
I don't believe so.
No, I don't think-
Housing update, no?
Sure, well, he's-
Okay. Could I? Sure. I'll entertain a motion to move up, just because Mr. Benoit is here. Move up Agenda Item 6B, update on housing plan.
Sure. Oh, do you need the motion?
No. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We've moved up Agenda Item 6B, update on housing plan. Ms. Jacobson?
Through the chair, just to let the board know, we have appointed a five-member subcommittee, a housing subcommittee, and happy to say that Denise Brotherton, your fellow selectman, applied to be on the committee and is going to be a great asset to it. So thank you for doing that. And we have four other very qualified people who've applied and have been appointed to the committee. Their first meeting is next week. And we actually, this afternoon, had our first kickoff call with the consultant. We, the contract is through CMRPC and two other housing consultants, Jane Armington and Karen Sounamark, and they're working with us to put this plan together. The plan will be completed by September 30th. We did an amendment to the contract to give that extension date, because we really, this is a very comprehensive plan, and there's no way we could get it done by the end of June. It would be rushing it. So it will be a condensed timeline, but by the end of September, we hope to have a housing plan that includes a housing production plan. And this will be molded into the master plan, which is underway, if you wanted to mention that, too.
Sure. So through the chair, this is Chapter 5 of the master plan for housing, as we're obviously working on the economic development section through consultant, too. This housing section incorporates a lot of data through land use, as well as our existing inventory and any of the plans that have been passed through the planning board, building permits, and such. A lot of comprehensive data collection involved. But this report, and through the great consultants that we've chosen, when completed in September, would help the master plan committee complete another chapter. And on the pace that we're at now with economic development, housing, and having already completed the open space updates in June of 2016, there's a strong possibility you could have three chapters of the master plan completed this year.
Wow. Good work.
We want to thank the town planner and the master plan committee, too, for all the work that they've done. As you said, the economic development piece should be done shortly. So we are making progress. A lot of planning, it takes time.
Yeah.
You know, we hope that residents understand these are multi-month, likely multi-year processes. And so we really appreciate the volunteers, too, and all the time they put into it.
And thank you, Mr. Benoit. I think you're, oh, probably three nights a week at meetings?
Easily.
Maybe four. So thank you, see our commitment and dedication to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night.
That's it. So go home and get ready for the storm.
Will do. Take care.
Thank you again. Going back to the agenda, we have Item E, gift acceptances in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Mr. Coyle is here if he wants to comment, or if we have any questions regarding this. The first item is for the DPW Highway Division. We have pictures of Pakajag Golf Course with an approximate market value of $500 from Mr. Michael D'Agostino of Kason Foster Photographers. Mr. Coyle, we have three in a row, if you want to join us.
Yes, well, I just wanted to, we were thankful that Mr. D'Agostino had provided those pictures for us. I know he spent several hours walking the golf course, and he's a professional photographer, and we're very appreciative of his work.
And these are photographs of the golf course?
Yes.
And where are they? Inside the clubhouse?
We have, right now, we haven't put them in the clubhouse. We're going through them. We've used some of them with some of the newsletters and things that we've used. So they've been, you know, excellent for us to have available, and it was a great job that he did. So we'll probably post some of them and frame them and put them at the course, so.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept with gratitude.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. The next item we have is also from the DPW Highway Division. We have from the Auburn Mall, 17 benches, 11 large barrels, three small barrels, one office desk, and one computer desk with an approximate market value of value, excuse me, of $3,000. Mr. Coyle, can you tell us a little bit about this?
Yeah, thank you. This was a great opportunity for us. We were contacted by the Auburn Mall management, and they were replacing their benches and some of the waste receptacles, and they're actually in very good condition. We're pretty excited to get them. And the benches, we're going to be using these again at the golf course. I think it's going to be, it's something that we were looking to purchase benches at one time. So it's a big savings to the town, and they're really in nice shape. So we're very excited to have the furniture from them, and we're very thankful.
Excellent. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept with gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And the last item is also under Mr. Coyle's authority from Home Depot, an approximate market value of $3,000 for paint and stain, and that's for various locations in town buildings. And I think we can start in this room, Mr. Coyle.
Again, the DPW is very generous to us. Typically, on an annual basis, they will contact us with materials that they would not be using. Some of the paints we may use as primer. They've donated material, building materials to us as well that we'll use for retaining walls in different areas. So again, it's almost on an annual basis that they do reach out to us, and we're very appreciative for their generosity.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept with gratitude and thank them tremendously for their continued support to our town with donations.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. I think that's your last agenda item.
Thank you.
Go get some rest, you're going to need it.
Yeah. It'll be fun.
Good luck tomorrow. We'll be thinking of you.
Good night.
Good night. There are no proclamations, so the next item is the March meeting schedule. I just wanted to remind members of our meeting schedule. The next meeting will be March 20th, which is, you know, an extra meeting. We will have executive session at 7:00 PM and then a public meeting after that. We have no meeting on our regular scheduled 4th Monday, which is the 27th, but we do have a special town meeting on Tuesday, March 28th. So just please make note of that for your calendars. Also, does anyone have any questions on that?
Are we meeting prior to the special town meeting on the 28th?
We will know the answer to that at our March 20th meeting, depending on whether any agenda items come in that need our attention. If there's, if we've taken any action on the warrant articles, excuse me, and nothing comes in, then we won't. So we'll know on the 20th if we need to schedule a meeting.
And just for the record, what time is the special town meeting?
7:00 PM.
At the high school auditorium.
Yeah, at the high school.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
The next item we have, just informational, is the timeline for the town manager evaluation. So completed evaluations are due to the chairman by this Wednesday, March 15th. They can be dropped off here at Town Hall. It's for all members. Then the chairman and the vice chairman will go over the evaluations and, you know, accumulate scores, and we will have the public evaluation meeting on Monday, April 10th, 2017, where board members will be able to read their written comments publicly. Are there any questions on that? Seeing none, we'll move on to town manager items, where we have one left, which is a request from the police to, excuse me, for board vote to declare police vehicle as surplus. Mrs. Jacobson?
Through the chair, this is just a standard procedure to declare police vehicles that no longer can be repaired for a number of different reasons as surplus, and that allows us to dispose of it.
Okay. So specifically, it's a 2010 Ford Crown Victoria that Sergeant Greg Wamit has requested to be declared surplus. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we allow the police department to discard this vehicle, or dispose of...
Declare a surplus, yeah?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. I know it's not on the count, on the agenda, but I would assume you want to talk about the storm tomorrow?
I would. I would like that opportunity. Well, this is, as everyone has heard and watched the forecast, throughout, unfolding over the weekend, and today in particular, at the point that we came into the meeting at 7:00 PM tonight, there was a blizzard warning in effect for 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. That had, tomorrow, on March 14th. That had originally been, it was a little less than that earlier. There was a winter storm warning initially from 5:00 to 1:00, and then a blizzard warning from 1:00 to 8:00. So that has been upgraded to a blizzard warning, 8:00 to 8:00. The forecast for the region that we are in, central Mass, potentially a little west of us and definitely south of us, we're in the 18 to 24-inch area. We're supposed to experience gusty winds, a lot of drifting, and very poor visibility with snow coming down two to four inches an hour at some times. So it's going to be very dangerous driving. We highly recommend that if you don't have to go out on the roads, please don't. First of all, it's for your own safety, and second, it's so our DPW crews can keep the roads clear. It's much easier to clear than when the roads are empty. So as a result, tomorrow morning, actually, all day tomorrow, all nonessential town offices will be closed. So Town Hall, the library, the senior center are all closed all day and evening. So that's, any meetings that were here during the day or evening have been canceled. And my, I know the Auburn Public Schools has already announced that they are canceled tomorrow as well. And this includes from the senior center, because sometimes we get asked, the van service and lunch that's served at the senior center is also canceled. And again, it's dangerous conditions potentially. We did post on our social media, Auburn Community Television, and our website, a lot of helpful information for residents and businesses, should there be power outages, which are anticipated in scattered areas. It all depends on the weight of the snow and the depth of the wind, whether we have any or not. But we do have posted on there phone numbers to call for National Grid, Verizon, Charter, and N-Star. And just remind residents, if you see a downed wire, which we had recently in the windstorm, please do not go near it. Call immediately the police station, and we will get crews out there, and National Grid will get crews out there. So all that information's on the website. We did put out a code red message this evening to everybody to let them know that the town offices were closed, and we hope that we will be back up and operating on Wednesday morning as on a regular schedule. If we're not, we will send out a code red message to the public and post that we would be having a two-hour delay or a one-hour delay. We're hoping that doesn't happen.
Just one question, in case people don't think of it. Any posted meetings for tomorrow evening would also be canceled, correct?
Yes, all meetings, events, programs, anything that was to take place in Town Hall, the senior center, or the library are all canceled.
Okay.
Yes.
And they can contact Town Hall. If there was a public hearing or something, say, for the planning board, they can contact for the new date?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Brotherton?
I'd also like to reinforce that the code red system indicating that there will be no trash pickup tomorrow.
Thank you.
And subsequently, it will be a day later. Your pickup will be a day later.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, Republic.
Bins on the stairs, they're trying to plow.
And that's important, because if you don't realize that, and you put your bin in the street, there's a good chance, A, it's going to get blown away by the wind, and that creates a driving hazard, or B, it's going to get run into, because you can't see it in the storm, and if it moves into the street. So those will be postponed by one day. And again, if Republic has the need to do this again, they will notify us, and we'll get something up tomorrow on the website.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're hoping this is the last storm of the season. Let's, let's hope. DPW's done a great job. It's interesting, but, and I think Mr. Coyle mentioned it before, I believe DPW's been out somewhere in the neighborhood 44 times already this winter. It doesn't seem possible, because you don't see the accumulations of snow that we've had in the past, but it's been a lot of storms on a lot of evenings, a lot of weekends, and a lot of holidays. Exactly.
I think we've had more ice storms.
Yes, a lot of ice, a lot of sleet.
And snow this year.
So I want to thank them all, because they work really hard, and it's a tough job, but they do a very great job. So, thank you.
Do you have anything else tonight?
I do not.
Okay. We have no table items. We have no Board of Selectment items unless members have anything?
No. No. I just want to mention that Special Olympics of Massachusetts, how their games here this week, this past weekend, on Saturday and Sunday. And first of all, it's just an incredible couple of days. But what I've noticed over the last several years, a more and more community participation. We see more residents come out volunteering, observing. We see young people, boy scouts, girl scouts, cheerleaders. We see seniors coming out to volunteer. It's really turned into quite the event, and, you know, the town hosts them and does a great job. Congratulations to Kristen, who organizes it, Ellen Ganley from Special Olympics Massachusetts, who happens to be an Auburn resident. It was just such an impressive, wonderful event, and, you know, there's a reason they call it Special Olympics, because those athletes are very special, so.
Thank you for saying that. We definitely want to thank Kristen Pappas and Ellen Ganley for all the work they do on that. It is, it's a great event.
Yep. There's no one here for public comment. We have the minutes of January 9th. If there are no corrections or omissions, the chair will accept them as written. With that, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.[1773.11][1773.11][music]